Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, May 22, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Sherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
As we start your public work session this evening, we have a couple of items that we wanted to chat with you about under hot topics. The first one is a follow-up from your most recent meeting where we got into the subject matter about renaming Court Street. And specifically, what you'd ask us is to do some checking in terms of what are some of the expenses that may be borne or instances maybe where local government may have helped defray some of the cost. I'd like to recognize Mr. Hartman.
Can I defer to Mr. Holt?
That is fine. Mr. Hartman to Mr. Holt. It's an H and H thing.
I don't have anybody. Can't defer to anybody. That's it.
See, Richard is a short timer at this point. He can delegate.
You need to learn how to duck faster.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Good evening. Again, as the City Manager mentioned, just a little bit of follow-up about some of the feedback and concern that we received when we first reached out to the four affected property owners as part of the name change. In those initial upfront verbal discussions, three out of the four had expressed some initial concern over the potential cost of updating their records. Only one of those property owners then subsequently followed up and submitted to register concerns over the proposed street name change. Those comments were introduced into the public record during the April 3 Planning Commission meeting with the information in the packets coming from Mr. Greg Courier, who's VP of Human Resources of Mazemo Zenetti, which is the business right here on the corner. All of these same comments were contained within your May 8 staff packet for the City Council reading on the issue. He estimated the financial impact would be in the range of about $15,000 to $20,000 to update their records. Staff then came back and checked historically with prior economic development staff and checked our records. To the best of our knowledge, historical knowledge, there haven't really been any previous payments by the city or the EDA to any landowners in consideration of a street name change. And really also as a result of some of your inquiry last time, we also followed up with the cities of Virginia Beach and the city of Norfolk to see if they had any similar policies. And much like they did, they just try to notify the owners as much in advance as possible. They do not financially reimburse or cover any of those costs as a city, and that's been their policy to date as well.
Good. And I think council members, you know, you consider this information probably relies in most instances with localities. Sometimes there may be a street change in a residential area where the citizens on that particular street, you know, would have that responsibility of making the change of the post box, the address, that type of thing. And just wanted to bring that to your attention, just as you consider, you know, what other changes might be made down the line for whatever decision that you'd make here. It does start, you know, at least a practice or an expectation of how you'd move forward.
Did they give you a breakdown, Paul, of what that $15,000 would consist of?
Nothing in writing, no sir.
Nothing in writing?
Okay. He had started the presentation at the Planning Commission by saying he had a breakdown of those costs, but didn't leave anything with us, and I think even might have left before the vote and it happened. So I think he just came to verbally register the concerns generally, and that's the only feedback that we received, just the follow-up.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Nick.
So are any other questions on that? The next thing that we wanted to talk to you all about would be the employee bonus that you had spoken at your last meeting. We do have that as an action item on your agenda this evening. We've made a quick modification to the agenda, so you would take it up as an item submitted by council in that section of the agenda. What you also have in front of you, too, is the staff report. Normally, we would do a CMR, City Manager's Report, when it would come up on the City Manager's piece of the agenda, but we still wanted you to have that just as part of the record. And we would work to make sure that the staff report is part of the minutes, so it clearly articulates, you know, council's action in terms of what you wanted to do here. What we've done process-wise, as we mentioned, and we just want to make sure that council is comfortable and clear on the actions. We did collaborate with the school system for your directive last meeting in asking them to return the $9.9 million in its entirety back to the city. They were cooperative, and we did get that transaction taken care of last Friday towards the end of the day. So what you have on the CMRs, you're doing a couple of things this evening. Of course, the schools' request for the $4.9 million is part of the action that you're going to take, so they will have a piece of that $9.9 as a part of additional operational revenue for the next fiscal year beginning July 1. In addition to that, you've got the $2.8 million that would go for the one-time bonus in this instance. And of course, you had said that you wanted that bonus paid to employees prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
So we would have you take that action there as well. What we wanted to mention, and I think this highlights those categories, we did go back and carefully take a look at those folks who were included last time, and we brought that to you, and I think you've amended that listing to say that the constitutional officers themselves, considering them being elected officials, that they were not to be included. So the only other point of clarification we wanted to make for you, just in terms of practice by precedent, just for the sense of clarity, that those employees who are on probation have traditionally not been included because they're in the probationary status. So you have that. The last piece of information that you had asked us about would be the remaining. Once you've now done the bonus, the remaining money that would be left over would be, let me get my numbers straight here. Remember, we reported to you that you had about $3.9 million left above the 15% policy. That $3.9 million would go to more like $5.6 million, and that's the remaining money left over of the total $9.9, now that you've given the schools an appropriation of $4.9 for next year and taking care of the bonus, one time of $2.8. The remainder added to the $3.9 gives you $5.6.
Okay.
Quick question, if I can. Can I, I asked you this morning, I think it's important, we get it out on the record. Is my understanding VRS employees are not entitled to receive the bonus?
That is...
VRS retirees, if I said that wrong, are not entitled?
That's correct. That is, yes, sir, Mr. Heretic, that is correct. Remember, with the Virginia retirement system, the state system actually provides the COLAs to that program. So if there's any COLAs in the benefit, that's independent of the city, and it's independent of any decision that council would make. If the system provides that COLA, our rates are adjusted appropriately to cover that cost. Remember, with the PSRS retiree group and FMP, the Fire and Police and the Supplemental, those COLAs are only determined by council. And normally, the rule of thumb has been, when you give a COLA to general wage employees, half of that amount goes to the retirees in that group setting. So that's been the practice. So again, the VRS COLAs, for those years that they do give COLAs, and it has been pretty consistent that in most years, they do receive a COLA. That is independent of council's ability to say yea or nay to that, and remember in those years that they are awarded a COLA. Still, if you haven't done anything for general wage employees, the folks in your closed systems as retirees, PSRS and FMP, don't receive anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to talk about the $5.6 million and make it, make us aware that we have some unfunded liabilities to look at, but to consider that, the auditor, a tax reduction to citizens, insurance on bridge, social security offset, the sound wall, economic development, and there are two items that we needed to talk about, Veterans Commission and Fisher's Hill that doesn't require any money at all, we can get those things off the table, I would like to do that. But I think we need to look at some of these issues and not carry $5.6 million above the 15%.
All right. Any other questions or comments on what we have here first, before we get to that? No problems or issues with the bonus, who's getting it, or any of that from anybody? Okay? All right. Thank you with that.
All right. Go ahead.
All right. All right, thank you. The next item we have, we're going to call Chief Hargis up to do the police chief's report.
Mr. Chandler, good evening.
Good evening.
Just before the meeting, we passed out a copy of the 2011 annual report for the Portsmouth Police Department, and what I'm going to cover tonight is just a quick snapshot of the information that's actually contained within that book. Presentation is going to follow through with a crime overview, some department highlights, some staffing and strategic initiatives. Overall, crime in the city, Part 1 offenses, is down again this year. 2010, we had 564. This year, we're at 542. That's roughly a 5% decrease based on 11 versus 2010, and that'll be the third year in a row for a reduction in crime. Violent crimes, if you noticed, under 2011 homicides, there's 14. That's actually going to be 13, as one has been determined to be justifiable. So that number is equal with 2010. You'll see an increase in rapes. There has been no pattern. Majority of these incidents have been known offender, so there's nobody out there running around that we're concerned with. And I will provide a warning for 2012. The FBI came up with a new definition of rape, so police departments all across the country are going to be seeing an increase based on a new definition, 12 versus 11, so...
What changed on that, Chief?
The types of offenses that can be included within the rape definition. Overall, for the past three years, we've had a 20% reduction in just violent crime alone. Property crime, as you can see, burglaries were up slightly, 1,341. However, the larcenies, which was plaguing us in 2011, has dropped substantially down to 3,722 from 4,000. Again, that's about a 5% reduction year to year, and overall, for the past three years, we've had an 8% reduction in property crime.
Chief, for leaving that breakdown by areas within the city where we are noticing a significant reduction or an increase?
With our comstat process, we are watching for hot spots, and as they develop, we deploy officers. Unfortunately, when you chase property crimes around, sometimes when you get an area under control, it moves to another area. So we constantly watch that every month and see where the hot spots are and redeploy officers, and the detectives focus in on those crimes.
Okay, thank you.
Our traffic summonses have increased again for 2011, and as you can see, the breakdown of various summonses. Suspended drivers, 1,627 summonses were issued just for suspension. In speeding, there was 4,478 summonses issued in 2011. Gunshot wound incidents, as I said, since I've been here since January 2009, one of my main focuses. In 2008, we had 76 gunshot wound incidents. In 2011, we're down to 27. That's a 64% reduction in shootings over three years that we've had, and every year has been dropping continuously. Again, based on hotspot deployment of personnel, as well as our gang initiatives, we've had a substantial decrease in the gunshot wounds. Juvenile charges, breakdown of juveniles that have been charged with crimes here during the year. Overall, charges for juveniles have been down in 2011 versus 2012, 2010, I'm sorry. 2010, we had a very strong push for curfew enforcement during the summer months, as you can see. Drug-related charges, 713 in 2011 versus 845 in 2010. 2010, we had two major narcotics operations going on for street-level narcotics, and we're gearing up to do those again in 2012, so additional charges will be filed there. Crime reduction, continued reduction in aggravated assaults and shooting, like I said, 64% over three years, 12% since 2010. Continued to reduce violent crime overall, and a continued reduction in property crime. One of the previous chief's reports that I did for council was our five-year strategic plan. We continually go back to the strategic plan, make modifications as areas are completed. We add other areas or new areas to keep us focused in on long-term direction of a police department, rather than just putting the emergencies that pop up from day to day. 2011, we opened up a new training unit location on Columbia Street, 309 Columbia. It's a 12,807-square-foot facility, computer lab, large classrooms, actually has two classrooms, a workout facility, it's accessible 24 hours a day. We combined our background investigators into there. It's a really nice building that we put together. The computer lab holds 10 laptops, and I've gotten a lot of good reviews on officers and outsiders attending training at the new facility, based on where we were prior to the move. Also, in 2011, we opened up the property management, our property and evidence unit. Moved this out of the basement of police headquarters, which was prone to flooding at times. We have more office space. There are separate and secure areas that serves both the public and the employees, has a higher level of security. Video monitoring is throughout, and again, the risk of flooding has been minimized now because we're actually on the first floor of the building rather than the basement. We moved forward with our accreditation in 2011, got that up and running. We're going back into process right now of renewing all of our policies. There's about 150 policies in the organization that need to be done. We're about 49 so far moving forward. There's probably another 10 or 12 that were just delivered on my desk within the past two days. Once I review them and approve them, we send them out to the officers and civilian employees, and everybody signs off on the policies as they come out. So we're expecting 2012 to get through that process of just updating and modifying our policies to best policing practices, and then once that's completed, we're going to move over into the various audit reports that are required by CLIA, whether it's internal affairs, property and evidence, and the other areas in the police department. And then from there, late 2013, we'll actually be going into accreditation process where we'll have the assessors come in and take a look at the police department. And I'm going for national accreditation through the Commission for Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. So hopefully, late 2013, we'll be coming back to council and doing a presentation where CLIA will be here to give us our accreditation certificate, so we're moving forward. One area that we are in major need of is to integrate our computer-aided dispatch records management system and crime mapping systems. Right now, the three systems that we have do not talk to each other, so we're in the process of seeking grant opportunities to apply to combine all CADs, records management and crime mapping into one system, and that'll give us the best intelligence as far as deployment of personnel, where crimes are happening. Right now, we have to pull data from a couple of different systems and manipulate the data and make it work for us to come out with our hot spots.
Now, your $1.2 million there that you need, will combine all that or get you a new software that'll allow all that to be integrated?
All three. $1.2 million is a complete system.
That's a new system, or that's just an integration?
It's a new system.
Okay.
It would actually, hopefully, be an upgrade of a records management system with a new CAD system by the same manufacturer, and then a crime mapping system, actually from another vendor, but it is capable of talking to everything that we want to do.
Okay.
What are the chances of getting a grant, Chief?
Depends on the federal government, for the most part, where the money's coming from, or what target areas are going to put the grant opportunities out for. We aggressively look for the grants. Our justice assistance grants and those types of things aren't high enough to cover that kind of cost, so we would actually have to really look for a specific grant that would allow that type of funding.
Are there some localities that have been successful in that?
There's been a number throughout the country that have been successful at times. It really depends on the Justice Department on what they want to focus their priorities on and where the money's going to come from. So when do you think you'd know if you're going to be successful in... It's an ongoing process. We're looking every time a new grant notice comes out to see if we qualify for it or not. I guess my concern is, you know, good communication is the key to everything in the world, you know?
Telling us.
Yeah. Yeah. So we could solve, we could solve, answer the world's problems with good communication, and answer the world's problems with good communication. But to have you not be able to talk to, you know, a police officer in downtown, not be able to talk to a police officer in Chersham because of something, is that what we're talking about here? Or did the radios we bought last year fix that? No, we're in the process of upgrading the radios through Mr. Gardner from IT. This is a separate system. The CAD system is actually the dispatch system used to dispatch police, fire and EMS, the calls. So you're having problems with dispatch now? The system works. The problem is, we can't take a look at computer-aided dispatch information as well as reports of crime. We have to take the data from both, combine it, manipulate it, and come up with the answers that we're looking for.
Chief, you've been able to highlight a pretty excellent example from being a former dispatcher early in your career. Can you kind of give them the modern day, when that dispatcher's looking at a number of terminals? I think that will be helpful.
The calls for service, when a citizen calls 911, it comes into the dispatch center, and the dispatcher asks several questions and takes the information and adds it into the computer screen. And whether it's police or fire-related, the appropriate units are dispatched. An officer goes out and actually finds a crime and takes a report, IBR is what we call it. That IBR gets entered into our records management system. So you have what the citizen called, the citizen may have called for gunshots, we may have responded to it and actually found a person shot, and that would be an aggravated assault. So in order to, what we do for intelligence-based policing is take a look at what's being reported by the citizens, what the officers are finding, and determine where our hot spots are and where our strike teams and narcotics and other units need to be deployed. Well, the problem is, our records, our CAD system, the dispatch system, doesn't integrate with our records management. So we have to pull information from both, put it into another program, and manipulate the data to make it work, and then come up with hotspot policing. When, the best-case scenario would be that I could go in my office at 8:00 in the morning, sit down at my desktop, and with a couple clicks of the button, get everything to happen within the past day, past seven days, past 30 days, and it would combine everything. So that's really what we're going to do. Yeah, that's very helpful.
Chief, if you had a base amount, what do you think a grant would bring to you?
There are some major cities out there that have had the entire integration covered by the federal, by federal grants. There's other agencies that, during the ERA Recovery Grant, got $600,000 out of $1.2 million, they were able to cover the money from other avenues. So we're looking for however best we can cover this type of purchase down the line through grants.
And get most money.
Give it your best shot, but let us, keep us informed, okay? All right. I appreciate you not asking for the $1.2 million tonight, too.
You should have been here last week.
But... I'll come back next month. I'll be here. One of the things that we've done with some of the grants, we've developed, first off, our marketing committee got together and came up with new taglines for the police department, and it's keeping with Portsmouth Police Department, it's pride, professionalism and dedication. You'll be seeing that on our cars with the new decals that we have out there for any new cars that come out. Our rest van already has that. Some of the other areas we spent the money on, we created a video journal. We've actually followed a couple recruits through the last police academy class when we hired 17. We're going to turn that into a recruiting-type video that we can go out and display to bring in additional people. We're coming up with two 30-second marketing commercials. The first one has just been completed, and right now, we're in the process of doing a recruiting video. That should be coming out within three to four months, but I just want to show you that we're...
Crime, professionalism, dedication. Utilizing state-of-the-art equipment, boats and vehicles, officers and civilian staff all together to keep you safe. Free home and business safety surveys, then add your personal property engraving and community-oriented police officers dedicated to the safety and security of Portsmouth residency. Portsmouth Police Department, your police force.
That's great.
That's nice.
Just a quick 30-second blurb to say what the police department does, and again, this will be backed up with another recruiting commercial here in the very near future.
That's right.
Chief, in your recruiting process, how's minority recruiting going? I think the 17 that graduated the academy in January is a very diverse group. I believe there's six or seven minorities out of that group. I believe 14 out of 17 have advanced degrees coming out of that. We have 11 that'll be graduating June 4 from the police academy. They'll be going into field training, and we're in the process of putting 15 into the late-June academy class. Females? Mix of males, females. It's a very diverse group, all three classes. In fact, at the one chief's forum, right after the 17 graduated in January, I believe it was February, I actually had them appear at the chief's forum, the meeting, and that's one of the compliments that I had, it was a very diverse group that was graduating. And they are just starting to complete their field training and starting to go solo status right now, so...
What does that leave us for staffing?
As of today, I believe we're at 251 officers out of 263 authorized positions, and I believe we're at 94 civilian out of 106.
Good. What percentages are we looking at gender-wise?
I'm sorry.
What percentages are we looking at gender-wise, male, female?
Um, it's a big improvement. Of sworn personnel, I'm sorry, that's total complement of the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
That's sworn and civilian.
Okay.
2011, we went after $406,000, just over $406,000 worth of grants. We're successful, National Night Out, the JAG, Justice Assistance Grant, Port Security Grant, Pedestrian Safety Grant, and the Bullproof Fest Program. So we're, as the opportunities are out there, we are applying. Just talking about the numbers, sworn, 93% of positions are filled, however, of 93%, we're still right now at about 212, 213 that are deployable, because the others are in some level of training. So a year from now, hopefully, we'll be a lot closer to a full complement of personnel that can have a deployable rating still. The annual report that we provided will be out on our website. It's not there yet. It will be by the end of this week posted, so the citizens can certainly go to it and see the, all the information that you have in that book that we presented.
Very good. Thank you. Good job. Let me ask you something about the Port Norfolk piece. Where are we at with that? I know Councilman Heretic and I attended the Civic League meeting the night that you were there and spoke on it, and they talked about their neighborhood watch and all of the issues.
I believe they had about 60 volunteers for the neighborhood watch. I'm not sure if they all followed through with it, but I believe it's up and running. Several of the crime issues that were brought up that night, some of those have already been worked on. The prostitution sweeps are primarily focused in there, hotspot policing, number of units have gone in there, the fugitive unit has gone in there. Burglary detectives have been working some of the property crimes that came up with. So we are making progress in Port Norfolk.
Chief, anything you need for the troops in the way of equipment?
The new cars are continuing to roll in. The vehicles that we purchased in FY12 are just starting to be delivered now, so we'll get those cars equipped and get them out there. We're in the process of transitioning into the new portable radios and mobile radios with the IT upgrade. We've been able to continue to fund our air cards for the computers in the cars. We've been using some grants to grab on to additional cameras for the cars. That computer-aided dispatch records management system, that's the big price tag item that we're, we need to fund and look for down the future here.
Do, what percentage of our cars have the cameras, the dash cameras?
All of our fleet cars that are assigned to Uniform Patrol have the cameras in the cars. We have about 25 cameras that we pulled out of old cars that we're going to transition into the field training cars. Neighborhood impact officers will have cameras here very shortly, as we get the personnel available to do the installs, we get that equipment onboard.
Plenty of state-of-the-art weapons, radar units?
Radar units we purchased. There's always a request for additional radar units, so as funding becomes available, we try to get those. The tasers, we've continued to upgrade the tasers and buy more. Some officers have their own personal taser assigned to them versus checkout, so we're moving forward with that and getting the equipment as funding's available. So we're moving forward with that and getting the equipment as funding's available. We had the two major areas, our training unit, we got that up and running, all the furniture and everything. We used asset forfeiture funding, so it was no impact on our budget to get the gym and everything there. Property and evidence was actually funded through the FEMA, through the November 2009 nor Easter. So we took that funding and were able to build the new property and evidence unit that we just opened up on Water Street in 2011. So as the needs are there, we prioritize them and as funding's available, we go ahead and try to get the equipment as quickly as possible.
Great job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Fees. One last slide, and this is an additional sheet that I put on the desk before the meeting started. I think there was a request in reference to the burglar alarm ordinance and alarm fees charged by the various cities. This shows the other cities in the area, what they charge based on the first, second, third, fourth alarm response. I was out of town at the last meeting, so I'm not exactly sure if there was any other information that was requested.
What's the, I guess the only other question I would have, do we know what a, what the cost of a police response is, chief? To something like this?
On average, probably a pretty close estimate would be about $140, $150 per alarm that we get dispatched in. If you want to take into account the dispatcher time that's entering the information into the computer, the cars driving to and from, the number of officers going there, the time that they spend if they go inside the house for the commercial establishment to check the building, you want to include all the costs of personnel time and vehicle running to and from, you're probably in that, somewhere in that area.
So it's obvious from that comparison that we're as, losing proposition as we stand?
Well, you compare it with the other cities, we look like we're pretty right in the hunt. I mean, you know, we're not the highest and you see some of those other cities.
I don't want to go in a direction that some other cities have gone where they actually make the subscriber respond before they send the police officer out. You have a burglar alarm there hoping that if there is a break in, you actually catch the person that's breaking in. However, there are some places that get labeled to be problematic where the owner actually doesn't want to maintain the alarm and we keep going back for false alarms, false alarms, false alarms. Those individuals will fall in the category of being fined.
One of the things that I had seen in one of the cities was a graphic diagram of the city and periodically as things happen in certain sections within the city, certain lights were reflected on the boards and they could give you the data as to how many, what sections of the city, which section had the greatest number of a particular type of crime. And they were doing some research in how you zero in on tracking that through. And I'm not sure, do we have that capability within our city?
You can actually go to our website and click on my neighborhood and it'll actually, you can actually see what's occurring within your neighborhood. It'll actually bring up the information out of records management. When I talk about the CAD's records management upgrade, that's a more sophisticated type software that the police could take a look at because we'd be looking for day of week, time of day, MOs, where they're breaking in at, those types of things, information that's going to help us deploy our personnel better.
Given the chief's feedback on what the cost is versus what we're actually billing, and keep in mind, a lot of these false alarms are caused by the vendors, not by the business. And the business ends up billing the vendor for that. A lot of it's cleaning services, people working in there at nighttime. So the business is getting their money back. The people not getting their money back are the taxpayers. You know, if it's costing over $100 to respond, well, the chart shows in many instances, we're only charging 50 and that's after a third response. So I would like to see us kick that around some more and look at adjusting that.
Yeah, I would think, chief, after that, that fifth and ninth and that 10 or more should reflect what our actual cost. I mean, I wouldn't have an issue with us looking at increasing that to cover the full cost, I mean, after four times. But looking at what some of the other cities are doing, still looks like we're in, we're in good shape, but I think if that cost is actually 150.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the same chart. You are mayor. I see Virginia Beach 150, Suffolk 150, Chesapeake 100 and we're at 50. Call that a good shake.
I think after the third time, we're going to charge actually.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah, but you left off Norfolk and Newport News that were free. I mean, when you're doing a comparison, you don't go to the high end, you try to make sure that you're in the hunt. But still, I just mentioned, I don't, I don't see a problem with us increasing that, that fifth and ninth and that 10 or more.
I think it should kick in in a third. We should at least recoup our cost.
I agree with that. Three times you're.
You know, three, three times is, that's the cost.
We can take that up, yeah. Thanks for bringing us this. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Chief Argus. Okay, members of council, the final even, thing that we have this evening for hot topics regards the Recreation and Parks Master Plan. That document, of course, started with a kickoff in about this timeframe, May timeframe, 2011. And of course, through your Destination Portsmouth Initiative, which really looks to tie council's vision to land use development, we've set forth the public process several years ago now that has the civic engagement component tied to working any of your master plans through that process to get to a point of approval. We wanted to take this time this evening to come back to you and work session because as we're coming down to the culmination of this project, normally that does have an aspect of council approval. In the month of June, your first meeting in June, you will have a public hearing as part of the traditional process for public input and to actually be able to comment on what is your draft plan. Your second meeting in June, it actually would be coming to council for approval. So we wanted to take some time, as we have done some periodic updates for you, to give you an update in terms of the latest content of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So I'd like to start by recognizing first Deputy City Manager Brennan Gottfried, who also serves as our Recreation Director. Please, Mr. Gottfried.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. To my right is Doug Cole with Design Forum. He is one of the, the two members of our consulting team along with Susan Reed from Commonwealth Architects who worked with us on this project. And he'll be presenting the later part of the presentation. And of course, Paul Holt was part of our Master Plan Team. And as Mr. Chandler mentioned, the purpose of the briefing is just to summarize the final draft of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as it stands today and kind of review the development of it from the beginning over a year ago. It was exactly one year ago when council initiated this process. You formed the Master Plan Steering Committee, which is comprised of General Short, Brian Meals and Curtis Gunn, who guided us through the Destination Portsmouth process. And there was a staff team comprised of the planning department staff, Parks and Rec staff and school staff to conduct research, to survey, to do survey logistics, to provide inventory information, to facilitate meetings, essentially to do as much of the legwork and to provide the working knowledge of the Parks and Recreation System for our consultants in the process. And that team included Paul Holt, Jocelyn Dubois, Fred Bruso and Jonathan Hartley from the Planning Department, Margaret Thorne, Meg Pittenger, Valora Baskerville and myself from Parks and Rec and Sharon Moore from the schools. The first phase, consistent with the Destination Portsmouth model, was to identify challenges. And we did this by inventorying the existing system of Parks and Recreation assets and developing a survey questionnaire to gauge citizens' knowledge of the available assets, to determine their preferences in terms of activities and parks and facilities and to obtain feedback on the greatest needs with regards to parks, facilities and programming. The survey was available at several locations in a hard copy format and was also available online. We also convened stakeholder groups with specific interests, including athletic leagues, civic leagues and relevant appointed bodies and solicited their input on the challenges. And then we assimilated this feedback into a draft statement of values and mission and took those statements along with the survey data back to citizens in the form of citizen forums back in the fall for further feedback and revision. And in those forums, in essence, we were asking, did we get it right and are we on the right track so far? And that wrapped up the challenges phase and that information became the genesis of the draft document. And that brought us to the solution phase in which the Master Plan Team and consultants drafted an outline of possible recommendations to focus the plan. We took the mission, vision and values and draft recommendations back to citizens in another series of open houses in February to further gather feedback, check that we were on the right course and to refine from that feedback, what should be the specific action items to accompany each area of recommendations. And we posted all of this draft information on the web and continue to receive online suggestions and combat, comments back through the, the web feedback system. And that gave us the substance for the draft master plan, which we got an initial look at in March and then also posted that on the website. The consultants and staff continued to refine it based on citizen feedback until we had a draft that is pretty much the same document that you have before you tonight. The Parks and Rec Commission received a draft at its meeting in March and then over the next month reviewed it and they adopted it at their meeting on April 25th. The Planning Commission also received the draft and held public hearings and discussions at its April and May meetings, ultimately adopting it at its, at its May 1st meeting and recommending adoption to council. And finally, we had some outstanding input and discussions with the Master Plan Steering Committee along the way, who met for the last time and recommended approval of the document on May 11th. So just to recap and illustrate, we assimilated citizen input through the process, throughout the process, involving it from a draft, mission, vision and values to recommendations to specific action items for implementation. And of course, you're familiar with this slide. It shows in greater detail the overall development of the plan through the Destination Portsmouth process with guidance and feedback at each stage, challenges, solutions and plan development from the Steering Committee, from focus groups and open houses and culminating with the final public hearing and plan adoption. So we developed the mission, vision and values for the master plan and used that with the identified challenges as the basis for these five action areas that Doug is going to touch on in just a few minutes. That's communication, maintenance, recreation programs, community facilities and additional land. This is the master plan vision statement. I won't read it, but it's, it's, came out of the development of, of all of those civic engagement processes. And these are the master plan values and these were the basis for the development of all the recommendations and action items. Now I'd like to introduce Doug, who is our consultant to highlight the recommendation areas in the plan.
Good evening. Thanks for having us down. And again, Susan Reed with Commonwealth Architects was a big team player. The, the recommendations are broken into five different areas, as Mr. Gottfried said. The first one is communication. And Mr. Cherry, I think you said a few minutes ago, Police Chief, that communication is the key to the world and typically you don't have communication in Parks and Rec plan. But what we discovered here was that a lot of people in Portsmouth, they weren't real familiar with the parks and what the park system had. So we started off with communication as the first area to focus on. And the very, in each of these, as you see, actually, sorry about that. Communication, so each of these in your book or in the master plan is broken down into much, much greater detail than we show here. But the first component of communication was we said you needed to develop a marketing campaign of parks and programs, really making the people aware, making the citizens aware of what you have because you have tremendous resources. It's just not everybody knows what you have. So that was the first recommendation. And coinciding with that, we said you should proactively market the benefits and advantages. There's health benefits, social benefits, economic benefits, there's lots of benefits for people participating in parks and programs. So we said that was just really, really important aspect as you developed a marketing campaign to combine that with it. As the world evolves and, and social networking becomes more pronounced, we said you should update the website on a regular basis. This is how most people get their information today and as time goes on, more and more people will. So updating the website on a regular basis would just help the citizens become more informed of parks and programs. In discovering all the parks here, there's 46 parks and, and recreation areas, we thought you should really create your unique brand. It's very, very, Portsmouth has a unique system of parks, different than the other cities in this area. And it's really a draw for people from other, other cities to move here as a draw for businesses. So when you develop your, your branding, we just said, you know, develop these, you know, Hoffler Creek, a city park, you know, different parks just to really create your unique brand and how you're different than others. One of the things we noticed at volunteers is it only declined nationally, but in Portsmouth, we noticed that the volunteer efforts were, were greater than most cities. So we said you'd need to wait, find ways to take advantage of that because people want to be involved, so try to help them become involved. So in a nutshell, that was the communication aspect for the first area of study or recommendations. The second one is maintenance. The first aspect of this was we said you should discover or you should establish a maintenance benchmark. I think we all have our definition of what, how things should be maintained, but the National Parks and Recreation Association, they have benchmarks that you can actually classify each park and then your park maintenance can be judged based on some, an outsider's perspective. So everybody's on the same page with maintenance. Develop a process to measure customer satisfaction. If people aren't happy, you know, is it easy or can they tell you what they don't like about something? Or if something's working, can they tell you? So very simple, just developing a process to measure customer satisfaction. The third one is just a very, very simple thing. Ensure that the support items are available to the public. You know, if there's no trash cans in a park, people are going to throw the trash in the ground. So it's just sometimes as simple as putting a trash can out there or other items just to help the public maintain the park and then in turn the, the maintenance staff. Ensuring that the appropriate equipment is available to staff. I think Mr. Moody was talking to Police Chief, you know, you've got to have the proper maintenance, the proper equipment in order to maintain the park. So, you know, if budgets get cut or budgets get increased, you know, if you want the parks to be maintained a certain way, you have to make sure that they have the, the equipment to do that. And just like communication, we said, you know, volunteer, volunteers are important. So establishing a volunteer maintenance group to help maintain the parks. We discovered people really want to do that. So again, you know, take advantage of, of what people like to do and want to do. Community facilities, the first one is upgrade existing park and facility uses to attract more users. We did list, we have a list in the master plan that shows specific items such as, you know, bike trails, dog parks, disc golf. So these are things that the people, the staff, national standards said that, you know, Portsmouth is lacking. And so we provided a list and then provided where these potential uses could go. If there are new parks, the, I won't say new trend, but there's a trend to make them multipurpose as opposed to a single use. So if you have 10 acres, instead of making it all soccer fields or all baseball fields, if it's a multipurpose, it could have a baseball field, a soccer field, a totlot, it could have many things to attract more people to it. And if a family goes, it makes that entire family more, more family friendly. Upgrade existing parks to create a strong image of public spaces in the city. You know, people are judged on how they maintain their house and your city is judged on how you maintain your public spaces. So if someone drives by and, you know, benches are falling apart, there's graffiti in it, the sidewalks are broken, you know, people, especially outsiders judge you based on that. So you really need to go in and just evaluate the parks and, and upgrade them where it's needed. The fourth one is upgrade existing recreation facilities. Susan is actually the architect, so she went to all the recreation facilities, studied them and made recommendations, very specific recommendations for each of the facilities. If I talk too fast, tell me to slow down.
Oh, no, you're going too slow, actually. Go ahead.
I've never been told that. Okay. Recreation programs, I'll talk a little faster. Recreation programs, really improving the awareness of programs for preteens, teens, adults, seniors and families. Portsmouth is actually very, very successful compared to the national average. Your programs are very, very successful. You have a higher rate of participation than most cities. Nevertheless, improving awareness makes them even better. Providing a balance of programs, you know, instead of having, for instance, a dance class in one part of the city, kind of spread it around so more people have access to it. Improving security or the perception of security. A lot of people in the surveys felt like there was a, a security issue with some of the facilities. We did a little bit of research, not totally in depth, but a little bit of research and we really found out there's more perception of security or lack of security. So trying to, going back to your communication, trying to, to communicate with people that it's really not a, a crime ridden area, it's really a secure area. Just like I mentioned earlier about evaluating the parks itself, evaluating, having a system to evaluate programs and the, the people in the programs and the services, just to make sure that, you know, people are getting what they want. Providing continuing education for the department, you know, as times change, as society changes, you know, making sure the staff is still educated with, as times change because things are changing very, very quickly. Providing more nature. Providing more nature-focused programs. It was a surprise for us how much people in Portsmouth liked the nature, so trying to expand that. Demographics show that our adults population is growing, so, oops, I missed, sorry. So trying to provide more programs for the active and senior aspects of our society. Developing youth, development programs, you know, youth has more and more pressures as society goes on, and trying to sort of target the youth now before, you know, they turn bad, so just trying to develop more youth programs. Expanding historic and environmental-related education programs. Diversifying the scale of special events. We thought this was a little unusual and very good to see, but people here like the small neighborhood, little festivals, a citywide festival, and then regional. And then if you get regional, you get people from all over the region and the state to come to it. And then promoting the coordination of programs between the Department of Parks, Recreation and Youth Services and continuing education programs. And then finally, the fifth one, additional parkland. A lot of times you see these master plans, this is where they start, but this is actually not where we finish, but this is the last area. And the first one is to focus parkland acquisition in underserved area. If you looked at your master plan and you saw these little circles, some areas of the city are not served by pocket parks, community parks, or neighborhood parks. So we just said you really, to make things more equitable, you need to focus at new parks in the areas that don't have parks right now. There should be a balance of open space and park types, so not everything should be, you know, a field of soccer fields or baseball fields, but pocket parks are valued just as, and neighborhood parks are valued just as much as regional parks, so trying to develop a balance. Developing park trails and greenways, and this is where it kind of blends in with the transportation study that you did, so, you know, greenways and trails can serve as recreation, but they also serve as transportation, so trying to merge two programs together, the two studies. An obvious one is to reconnect the residence with the waterfront. There's a study done in, I think, '94, and we recommended a lot, we checked us a lot of things that had been done. A lot of things can still be done to help with that. Implementing a system-wide directional signage program, that's actually not additional parkland, but sometimes you don't have to build a park if people are aware of what's out there. And that kind of goes back to the very first one, which is communication. And then allocation of park and open space and planning new projects and developments. You already have some of that in your zoning. We thought it should be strengthened. We thought it should be a little more strong in some of the language, so we put that into the master plan documents, so if you do have a new development, that it's, that they allocate park and open space. So I did talk fast, I apologize for talking fast.
Done good.
Finally, just to close before we open for questions, this will be on your first meeting in June, June 12th agenda for first reading, and then the second meeting in June on the 26th for the second reading and consideration for adoption. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you have about the master plan or the process.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Would this be followed up with those specific recommendations? Do they have any dollars attached to them, cost?
They don't. They are, you know, one of the methodologies we used in prioritizing was really to try to present the things that could be implemented with existing resources first. And really, as you'll note, you know, the fifth recommendation is additional parkland. That's really kind of reserved at the end, because that's the most expensive option.
Yeah, I was thinking more what we talked about here, upgrading the existing park and facilities. That's going to require money. So I guess the following of this is, is to get us to what those dollars might be.
Right, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. How was the public participation in the process?
It was good. And in fact, I recognize a lot of people here, you know, today, but it was, I thought it was a good process. There was a lot of people, came to the open houses. There was a, it was a lot of, and there was an all-day affair. It wasn't a presentation. It was kind of walk-in, and if they wanted somebody to be with them, whether it was us or staff, then we did that. So it was all-day affair. We did it on a week, during a weekday and the weekend. We did the computer questionnaire, and I think it was, we got a lot of good responses, and the responses were spread out over the city, because we did by zip code or neighborhood. We did age groups, we did, you know, so we got a really good diverse, you know, it wasn't like, to me, it wasn't one side. It was very, very, it was a good survey, I thought.
Is this on our website now?
Yes, sir.
And how about Channel 48 or 99?
We, in advance of running up to the open house activities and trying to publicize when it was coming up for work session before, Planning Commission, yes, we ran it on PCTV and we had full-page ads in The Currents. This one, it was real interesting.
Oh, The Currents.
Thank you. This one was real interesting in terms of technology, and maybe that's because some of the younger folks, and I don't consider myself to be part of the group, and the younger folks anymore, are so interested in recreation. But we had a huge push on the technology piece and on getting their information from the web. We had, yeah, more than 300 people filled out the initial survey, but our web counts were really high, relatively high, every month. You know, last September, right, coming off of the initial kickoff, we had more than 782 visits, unique visits to the webpage, project webpage.
That's good.
In October, it was 410. November, it was 543. Tapered off a little to 370 in December, but as we got back up into January and February and March, when we started posting the initial solutions phase information that we wanted to get, citizen feedback, we were pushing over 486 new visitors to the web. And, yeah, it's just sort of interesting. I had one of the new, brand-new Planning Commissioners mention how much he appreciated the communications piece, because he said, yeah, while the web was great, if it's not on a smartphone app, he ain't seeing it. And so to me, that's sort of a really neat, low-cost way to start to push some of this information out. So the feedback we got was real consistent with our other Destination Portsmouth initiatives over the last four, five years.
I think this is great, how you guys phase in, making the best use of existing facilities and assets we have, especially from a monetary point of view, so I, you know, so don't take my question about the money to be the wrong way, but this, so we do have our ready, we do need to make sure they're up to standard. So that's why I'm...
Vice Mayor.
All right, just sort of follow what he's saying. We need to have your best-case scenario as far as implementing is, what do you think that might be?
Implementing what? I mean, all of it? It's a, it's a plan, it's a document that really kind of stands for, you know, a 20-year life.
Exactly.
Yeah.
What I would mention, council members, with all of your initiatives, remember your master transportation plan. These are now documents that kind of harness a sense of direction in terms of where you want to go. It doesn't obligate the council or the community to say what's exactly going to be done, but it does put the breadcrumbs out there for the best approach, and it gives you an inventory of what you have and where you want to go.
We were ready, some of us were ready to spend $2.1 million for one community. What I want to know is, I tried to find out anyway, what is our best-case scenario to get this done, so everybody gets a piece of the pie? Not 20 years.
Yeah, I'll answer part of that, and actually part of yours, but as an example, there are certain neighborhoods that don't have parks.
Okay.
And they have to drive, you know, or bike or whatever to their parks. Our first recommendation was to look at the schools, and if there's a school that has a, just say a baseball field, use that first. However, your school system may not allow that. There are some politics, you know, that every jurisdiction has, but our first recommendation is, if you have a school that could be used as a meeting facility and recreation, is you start with that. That can be done, I'm not going to say immediately, and in the, in the study, in the master plan, there's probably a 10-page report done by someone in California that explains the pros and cons of that. So that can be, if you can get that system worked out, that can be done relatively quickly. If you can't, it means you have to go to Plan B, which is to, you know, hopefully the city has some land in that area that could build a park. If not, then you have to acquire land. So it's how you want to structure the entire city, you know, has effects on the parks and recreation, if that makes sense.
Makes sense. I'm just, I still think we need to have some sort of a plan, if not, it's just a piece of paper.
And there are certain things that can be done, like, you know, very quickly, you know, I said, mentioned trash cans. You can do that, you know, almost tomorrow, not quite, but, and there are other things that will take time.
Sir, perhaps where the Vice Mayor is coming from is that we get a lot of master plans and a lot of studies that seem to, everybody's excited about them, then they, you know, we lose focus. What I would like to see is, how do we plan to chart our progress towards this? And it's like the old proverbial elephant, you know, eat an elephant one bite at a time. There's a lot of stuff in here. It's good. The maintenance piece is certainly important to me, but I would like to see how we're going to follow this up and keep it in front of us and stay focused on it. I think there lies the importance, so we just don't let it fade off into the distance.
One of the things, as we come in, we'll make the same presentation to you in two weeks at your formal meeting, one of the things that we've set this up to be, which we hope will help to formalize and institute this as part of the city mindset, is this will actually become Appendix C to the city's comprehensive plan. So we thought by actually attaching that to Destination 2025, I think I got that year right, it will, it will put it on that same level as the master transportation plan and even your downtown master plan, which is Appendix A and B, rather than being a standalone document. And we try to do regular annual reporting out on some of those accomplishments about those goals, objectives, and action plans. And as far as the city's comprehensive plan goes, I mean, City Council has done a lot over the years. When you start checking off, go back and pull that document out and start looking at all the things that have been done over the last four and five years collectively since that master plan was adopted, it's been a tremendous amount. It helps, to Mr. Chan's point, those breadcrumbs help to focus where those limited resources can go and helps to implement.
And maybe for the public's consumption and also council's, a report card periodically where we stand, a status report, and maybe the retreat is obviously a good time to do that, but I'm certain the public would be interested in keeping track of it as well. Great presentation, some good information there.
One of the things, I was right in line with some of the things that are coming out of many of Virginia-first cities, as they're looking at ways to maximize and take care of the community needs as well as meeting the school needs, where they are locating many of the community recreational facilities and things around your larger schools, where they are acquiring a larger acreage, and it ties in three or four different areas into the utilization of community resources. And in many of the cities, they are pushing that. As we go into many of the workshops, how they are maximizing the tax dollars to meet all of the community's needs. And they are not trying to put these sites at every school, but they are like looking at a zoning pattern, and many of the high schools, the things have become areas of community resources. And that has been one of the things that has helped us through the coordination of things through the school division, and I see the superintendent here, that they are doing within their schools and on their grounds for their softball fields and things, and it's tied right in with the physical plan for the city. And I think that's a plus, because that's the way this trend is going now for those areas.
Let me ask you, what did your survey tell you, or what kind of studies did you do in way of looking at underserved areas in our neighborhoods that didn't have proper facilities or things where, that were linked to also density of kids in different demographics, but that whole underserved piece in different areas of the city? Did you take a radio, hear, 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 and try to say, well, there's nothing here, but there is a school over here, but this facility, the school, still wouldn't serve here? Did you put any kind of intelligence like that together? That's what we're kind of asking about. If we had an action plan and we were to do something tomorrow, we get it, we need to upgrade what we have, everything we get pretty much is outdated. Citizens have already told us that.
That's right.
But if we were to do something tomorrow and you only had one piece of money, what would be the biggest bang for your buck? Where in the city, where is the most need? Where's the biggest bang, the biggest return on the dollar? Did you do anything that even get us close to doing or making a decision like that?
Well, I think we did, and we listed, as far as priorities, you know, communication was key, because you have so many things, but not everybody was aware of what you had. So you can spend, you know, X amount of dollars and make people aware of it, as opposed to, you know, spending several million dollars rebuilding or building something that you already have. So just making people aware, and kind of going back to your first question.
The underserved piece?
The underserved piece.
Okay.
We did, we broke the parks down. We had 46 parks. We broke them into classifications, from pocket parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks, and specialty parks. And each one, just say a pocket park, serves a certain radius and a certain neighborhood, you know, and it won't go beyond that, people just won't go to it. And then a neighborhood park, you know, the circle gets bigger, serves a bigger area. And then a community park gets even bigger. So we looked at all of that, and it's in your map, and it has different colors for, you know, the different kinds of parks. And then we said, these areas are definitely underserved. And when I say underserved, you know, there's quite a distance to get to some parks. So we said, these are the ones, you know, if you're going to build a new park or open a school up for a community center or playgrounds, this is, you know, here are some schools, and we drew a circle around, we said, if you use the park in this school, it'll help serve this community. Right now, it's not served, but if you use that school, then this will happen. If you don't use the school, then you got to find, we didn't go in and we didn't say, here's some available property we can put a park on, because first recommendation is, instead of building a baseball field, you know, a quarter mile from a baseball field already exists, use the school. That was our recommendation. I know there are constraints with that, you know, and, but a lot of jurisdictions are doing it now, because budgets are extremely tight. It's not like the old days, where you just had, everything was kind of separated. Now things are starting to blend, and it's not easy. You know, we acknowledge that it's not easy, but if a neighborhood is, you know, I mean, I don't know where you live, but you can imagine if you're, if you live in a neighborhood and just a quarter mile on the street, there's a school with a fenced-in playground and you can't use it, you know, you're frustrated. And that's what we heard in our surveys, you know, you're frustrated. So we did look at underserved areas, and we did look at, if you equip it to schools, you still don't cover 100% of the city, but you cover a vast majority of it.
That's what I'm saying. You're now drilling down to where the need is. If you have the underserved area, how many critical areas did we kind of have, if you want to use that terminology, that there wasn't anything for the citizens that were in that particular area? Was it a large number, small number?
It was geographically, I don't have the map in front of me, but geographically, a large portion of the western part of the city and the northern, I don't know all the neighborhood names, but I say the western part.
West of Bydaway and once you get north of the interstate and Churchland.
Because most of your parks were developed back in the 60s, you know, and that's when you did a lot of baseball fields, soccer fields, and you took, this is where land is available, and that's what you did. And there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, everybody did that.
Right.
But it's just, you know, you develop your parks around neighborhoods.
Mr. Moody?
We did, talked about schools and the role that they can play in potential recreation facilities. How about the church of the faith community? Did they participate in this, or was that segment looked at?
They may have participated in the open houses, but we didn't go to churches and say, you know, can we use, because it's not a, it's not a, it's never a guaranteed use, you know, because it's a private organization, for lack of better words. So we didn't say that, you know, here is a church with a baseball field, and it can serve the community, but it's never guaranteed. So if it's a guarantee, then we look, so we did not look at churches or other groups like that.
We tried to drill down into that a little bit with the survey, because we did not, we did not want to set the expectation that the city would be the 100% provider of parks and recreation services, that we've got a fairly robust segment of folks who like to go to the YMCA, not picking on them specifically, like to go work out at these other places. So the upfront survey tried to drill down, well, okay, if you do use another facility, why do you pick that facility versus, say, going to a city park? Just to try to understand the dynamics a little bit. But we did not, to your degree of drilling down into the extent of necessarily inventorying those private or quasi-public facilities and try to get them in the mix, but at the same time, we didn't, we didn't set the premise of this master plan with the assumption that this would be 100% of the solution.
Well, where I was going with that is, in some of these areas that have been identified as maybe lacking some recreation services, that may be... as maybe lacking some recreation services, that may be potentially where a public-private partnership with some of the churches that, you know, either have fields or a rec room facility, where we could partner with them. Might be something to look at.
I think all of that is definitely something that we need to look into. My total focus in this was the young people, the elderly and the older people that are more mobile and can get to these other facilities, it's where the young people that are underserved, school-aged, they need to do something to help us with neighborhood watch and crime and all of those things that come about when you don't have adequate facilities within whatever the radius for a young person. If I live here, where do I normally migrate? If it's within one or two or three miles, if there's nothing in that area for that young person that migrates within that radius, then that seems like, as the chief would use, a hotspot, and if you're not doing something in that hotspot, you can best believe he's going to be ramping up his academy to be able to address that issue, because we don't have things in those type of areas. So the kids and having something for kids after school, you use the analogy of can't count on with the churches, but, and you talked about politics with the schools, and we dance around that issue, the school has it, can we use it? If the school's using it, and I can't have a facility where I've got a young person and a parent that can count on that facility, then it's not much use, you know, because if I didn't know the facility is available until Wednesday to have something, it's too difficult to get throughout that community where it's underserved and say, hey, we can use so-and-so elementary school on Wednesday, it's not going to work. We need something that parents can rely on, kids can know they can go to, and that's what I mean when I mean underserved, and that's why I'm interested in getting into your survey and see where those areas are, because that's where you can draw the line to the report we just got with our police chief and all of the other problems that we'll have in the city, if you don't have something there, even if it's small playground areas, but something in that radius where kids wander from neighborhood to neighborhood and whether or not there was something there. So that was the genesis of what I was trying to ask.
And let me just, and that was key. And with each of our chapters, and this is part three, we took a quotation from one of the questionnaires, one of the people, and this person wrote, you know, "I know that kids in my neighborhood have no place to play. This forces them to hang on corner, hang out on corners, and may lead to opportunities for mischief." So we were aware of that and tried to acknowledge it.
But in terms of the broader master plan framework, what was so neat, one of those aha moments you sort of always get when you, when folks really turn out and say really what they need and want, was there's just been, over the last decade or two, the demographic shift over what types of facilities the younger kids want.
Right.
There's just not a big push for organized sports anymore, so, I mean, to me, the whole notion of, when I first started a year ago, thinking, oh, we've got to go out and build more softball fields or basketball, and the team sport thing isn't just what.
Community centers, hanging out, weed, things like that, where you can do all different types of mentoring.
Yep.
There are all types of churches and folks that want to help, you've got nowhere, no central place for all of these kids to go, so they can come to it. So now you've got everybody trying to do something in a piecemeal fashion, which says, hey, city, you know, you've got, you've got to create the place, so these other folks can come to it and help, because we do have a huge amount of people that want to volunteer and want to do things, but we've got to have the place where they can come to, whether it's a church, whether it's a community center, but you're right, the whole little league piece is, is not as big as it's been when we were coming up, but you still, as a city, have an obligation to make sure that there is a center where all of those folks, is a magnet where all of those things, and your programs, you can adapt to whatever the sign of the times are, but if you don't have that central place. So I'm interested to dig into that, because I think I'll have a lot of questions, because I think some of the things you heard here is getting into the actual implementation phase, and you've just got a model here of, here's what you look like, here's what I'd do, here's some of the low-hanging fruit, but one of the biggest issues in our city and most urban cities is the underserved children where you are, and if you're not doing anything there, you're doing it up a rope, as it were.
Ms. Raynor?
Okay, I'd just like to add to one of the things that you were saying there. One of the things that we have noticed, and we have really fallen short, and we have to face it, we keep building community houses in certain pockets, but along with that, we never put in the piece of community recreation that's served at large density. Right now, and you've noticed it, because you couldn't miss it, as you drive through our city, where we have set up pockets of multiple housing units, where we are dealing with school-aged children who are living in there. Now, the schools can accommodate them by what they have done in their massive expansion plan, because they can bust them out. But many of these children are not able, or adults, able to get out of where they are. A little community recreation unit in a housing complex of over 300 units, where you have multiple age-level residents, is not doing anything. There's no need of us kidding ourselves, we do need a master plan, and they need open space, because you may be a teenager, you don't need to be boxed in a room and rocking chair, I might want to dance, that'd be the day. But anyway, I'm saying that we need to make sure they are purposeful to meet the ages of the people who are going to be in the area.
You know, a model of, I think with the mayor and what you're talking about, Marlene, was back in the 60s, the Beasley Center.
Yes, it was.
And that, that really fits the template of what we're talking about. It lasted, kids gathered there, it was an inside facility, had outdoor recreation component, but you could go in there and play ping-pong, shoot pool, and just have a good time. They had different programs that you could enjoy, and to your point, Marlene, they had dances.
Yes.
As well, so.
They were chaperoned.
That was a wonderful facility, and that's, I think kids are going back to that piece where they want to go in and do something.
But it's incumbent upon us, the city, to have the place.
Yeah.
The facility where they come, which gets back to the genesis of kind of how this whole thing got kicked off a year ago, but thanks for what you have there. I'm sure we're going to have more questions before we approve this, but an action plan on our part is required based on the data that you provided us, but I'm interested to see that data.
Is that my head?
Again, for the underserved areas, because that's where, that's where the area, the city is going to be reflective. If we don't do it at the right age, we're going to spend it in other areas of our city, which defeats the whole purpose of having this.
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor.
I'm hoping that I'll dance with the school system, it'll be a positive one, I think that's where we need to start, going to where you said the parks are needed, and start talking with the school system now, what should we do, and how should we do it?
Very good. Thanks again, very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chandler, anything else?
That's all we have.
Okay, very good, thank you. Madam Plurk?
Members of council, are there any council liaison reports you'd like to give this evening?
No.
Okay, seeing none at this time, we will break until your 7 o'clock meeting.
Very good.